Um, the.
Um, the.
For this meeting of the design and review board. It's the end of the day. For the world, please rise and turn against. I have little.
But you can see the wire. But you're not serious about it. And to do it all with. With bands. One nation. And the other. If it is for. The city itself, so to speak.
Before we see the items on it. And then. Um, we got a call in the community is very much with. Want to adjust our board. On any item that's not on the agenda. There are eight months which should be from now on.
Sure, yeah, I don't see any. You can come up with anything.
Forward. Um, the first item is approval over minutes for. Um, August seventh. August fourteenth. And September on the fourth. Of the version. But I think these one at a time or just?
Sure, there's one we combined as well.
Okay.
Make the motion to the set. By any comment.
Okay.
I will say. Do you want me to approve the minutes all?
I'll also make the motion to approve as published.
Oh. Do you have a question? That's second meeting discussion right by the minutes. All they were saying hi.
Hi.
Hi. Um, yes. The approval of that very perdua. At three ten west Campbell. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, the city staff presents and then it'd be a question. Speak it. Or speak.
Uh, there is more of your theme base this time of five P. On something early case PC twenty-five eighty, I've been in. Horse, you know, she takes me carefully. At three ten west, uh, this request currently perdua in rear yard. So if this property is far with fifteen and the total perdua is at three hundred fifty square feet in the rear yard. This is one that does have a key we in the backyard, but the fact is placed up, so this will be located outside of that. Eric. Here's picture from the front of the house. This case you're not going to see since it's very glad it's very defined structure itself. As the victory here comes by. Here we are. Directly. And almost perfectly behind that front door. Is proposed a little more destruction. There's just detail of it. People include flash notes and have. Bands. You know, the facial board sliding and again. Be set and a very specific area that wake the house as well as stop within. E. As far as analysis goes, both improvements are more obvious. Within existing architecture to the point that it can be, like the going to a small block. Perkless, maybe. Uh, it is the essential section thirty-nine decided to be standards enough to begin with public comments on his proposal. So our request is to approve the backyard perdua file PC twenty-five eighty at three ten west camp. Having some states that is the bigger packet upon stipulation that follows. Building permission by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. Without the ability to answer any question.
The, uh, building materials.
Primarily eleven. Uh, aluminum steel hose. Uh, for, for support and concrete pillars and be honest, but it's still goes to that a little. I don't know.
Oh, I guess I should have the city here. You know, right there.
I can go on too.
Yeah.
Sure.
For the record.
But. Jason Roberts. For the dollar three times a sample.
Do you need or you know, there's how many questions to the advocate center staff?
I make a motion.
Do you want me to?
No, we're going to find a thought. Sorry.
A motion and second. Uh, okay, those are discussions. All they were saying hi. Hi. Bye. Post. Um, thank you.
So that's your answer. I'll. Go all watch their sense, but all happened here. Just maybe we'll get you out of it. You don't need. Appreciate and, uh, yes.
And see as possible conversion. Uh. A whole action to give a shed to gas house conversion at forty-five ninety-nine normal. Bill, I'm sure.
This they chose this I I see. This is PC twenty-five eighty-six thousand five hundred. On her, it was that house being at forty-five and nine aren't filled with parking. And this is a version of existing shed, a very, very nice shed. It's not. A backyard shed by any issue for on the same page into a plug yes. So it's R one eight PP by development. If those it's to expand, we could see shut our maybe, uh, five over the sort of people speaking. For total of three hundred seventy-two square feet. Just under our maximum five hundred square feet. And you know, this is an instance where the five foot five setbacks have been. Set at, set at. Because of the pitch roof, so they are. Further away from side yard and rear yard in order, uh, they sure. They're just better matches the house. Here's the picture of the front of the house. You go by the. Uh, existing shed. You cannot see the street view of. You, uh. Walks in the imagery to try and show it to you. You cannot see it's well affecting the back. Uh, so far that is. Way back in that corner. Always in white is always assisting, but isn't a gray hash is what is saying post catch along. So again. No further approach to the side yard or some rear yard. Rather. Back towards the, uh, again, well. Well, separated from you. All right, we're going to go again. It's just, uh, always like a smaller version of the main house. It's roof. So that's type of stuff there. Would be the perfect place if. Well, I know something. As far as analysis goes, if you'll see very similar language throughout these, that's all which have, uh. If that's the intent, that's what we're bringing them for for each night. These are our moist existing architecture, basically attached to section thirty-nine. Uh, some of this. So we. Uh, who to approve, uh, the most guest has confirmed this PC twenty-five eighty-six and forty-five and nine for the first part. Some seats provided by that capable of supplies, which I don't read. Building permit which might seem to be required for any concerns. Her two. By on set intention, the hundred year six hour had a big construction. Something in the portion being had on existing shed. With a maximum of twelve steps. Free providing liberty utilities for large, large, and as now. A longer story about it for persons. Or if this is just, uh, a building permit, just get ahead to child assisting the new utilities of building permit plans that buy children laws is accepted. Some building. Thanks. As you know, like you already reviewed conceptual plans, I'd like to give as much information ahead of, uh, the premise of cats, but they. Can be as successful as they can unless maybe. Without the happiness and crushes us.
But good question. What is the matter that I, the rear backyard is said of? Uh, favorite, not for your set of road, right?
Sure, at least of course, you know, look, you might.
It's of course, thank you.
It's a lot of question. And that's a, that's a, I have a view of that. That's open. Yes.
Your station.
And then, sir, I guess there is H way. Brutal needed.
So, uh.
Yeah, that time.
Chair, it certainly does. It is an HOA. Again, this board does not, uh, factor whether or not. Where they are in that proposal. I, my hope is that every HOA always checks with us first. We can turn up straight with them. The chicken and the egg, but we're both running independently, as you say, for our. Jurisdictional limits, so. This is one part of that. Our decision does not factor if the issues.
There. Do you? That is any other?
Sewer and water. Sewer and water. Uh, where is that coming from now? Which way is that lot pitched for the main sewer?
Sure. So for whatever, Derek, I don't have that answer. Uh, the good news is not.
That's why I didn't find.
Uh, correct. In the, in these conceptual plans, as every reduce our potential elements, certainly we'd like to do. Uh, solid enough what we can and provide feedback.
Well, you know, since I've been doing it for years and just looking at this and wondering, I'm guessing that the sewer main is not. I, uh, the sewer mains out front. And since this was built and then they added that. Was that so we ever have any water assuming? Water is not wrong. It's an impression. The sewer is wondering what I'm wondering about and how much of a pitch.
Sure, to for member Derek. We have the same questions and certainly because we are not a utility company. We don't have all of those answers regarding that. It's up, it's on yours, but the owner and their architecture contract, so which supports liberty, so these fine. Rest of the.
Yeah.
It's not a delivery. It's up to them as the owner because it comes out very well.
Correct.
Okay.
If that's a limited service.
Well, it literally services them with water.
You're rid of the waste. You're rid of the waste of fish. Yes, it's a long way.
Well, it's there.
And, yeah. But there are ways around that.
Yeah. It's all, I'm not saying they're out. Okay. Like I said, it'll be the long time. I understand. When I see something like that, sitting here asking questions, if you, if you don't ask the question, then you don't take the.
It's a long way to go in. There's a minimal entry point.
It's. It's a long ways to go and part of our plans will show that there's a sewage ejection block. That's.
But actually from. Know about.
Cause it's a long run.
It's, it's as long as you keep it clean, it works great.
I might want to get your number.
Thank you. It's all part of the claim. Thanks for knowing that.
Oh, my goodness, suggestions out.
Well, does anybody know any questions about the design in terms that you guys committed all the? Building material, fashion, things. Our materials.
Yeah, like Ray said, it's a very nice shed. We're going to match it. You do. Uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all I'll talk about. Oh.
Yeah.
The capacity forty-five ninety-nine of the parkway. Uh. But we do have a short approval. Uh, and one of their stipulations as we go through here will. Uh, permanently through you. Uh, so that's down. Anything else you want me to?
And that's a special, very, sure. The chair is, uh, she thinks this.
Yeah, it's a material. It's, you know, just like the shed is there. Very nice, so.
Thank you. Yeah, do you have a question? I got one from that. Do you have a question? All my question and we do the, uh, first check and do a menu. Uh, Sunday's data that's surrounded, has been installations only five of the by the city.
I'm sorry.
A question sent in for further discussion. All they were saying hi.
I love it.
Any others? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next step is the, and is the front of the wall. Uh. Special possible actions to improve. Your, I heard right, two eighteen, the good one, Jerry.
Ladies and Chair, uh, our applicant, but the throttle is still in Kansas City, so he is available over the phone, uh. Your voice domain here later on presentation. This is item five D. Case PC twenty-five eight seven at two eighteen for the drive. Design is residential cluster by development. This request for demolishing the rebuilding existing courtyard hall. Over there on the, just down the street, according. Just, just for the way. About three and a half feet, uh, in order to facilitate a bigger ER. These are connected to, uh, properties in our city that have. Not necessarily a true backyard, but it's almost a slightly urban. Uh, they're moving from Kansas City to session on the weather, but it's too hot and they want some people. So. They are essentially, uh, coming forward with that existing walls close as they can, which. Uh, probably setbacks. In order to create more of an area that will be constructed. Again, here's the, uh, depiction of without being starts in full and then the darker line you can see is just the expansion of that wall. Now, as far as, uh, this one goes, we have two sections before them, uh, details. One being thirty-nine are designed to be two section thirty regarding the wall is seven. So it is, is opposed to plan and considered. And will leave like the light and ancient inside of the mountain system. Our best is to approve the, the wall operations, PC twenty-five, they said that to be sleep with the drive piece. So things being supervised by capital. Relations one, building permission applies to requirement. Or any concerns. Her two. High scale trials showing existing structures, utilities, all along both structure details of the wall. Again, this is a conceptual plan that, uh, they have their whole package for together. Or your considerance, consideration is keeping the past able to restructure with you. Or in all measure that structure itself is in a proper places. In order to find out that it was three and a half feet, they are already vetted, so they've done loose things to know exactly. How these assessments have ever. If that, you know, may answer any questions.
Setback, the setback. Is this best we analyze some of the houses that are dead and behind the setback? So is this? That's the. In project, the other neighboring. Property that been front, front leading mention.
So, Sharon, I see if, uh, if I really would write the constitution, I'd have three different answers to that question. So, uh, some are grand old situations, some are not, uh, even right away section. Bottoms to that section, so some are. Very inappropriate some parts. As is these used to this, as is, uh. We do much as we pop, it's pretty safe in protocol of importance. At three and a half. So. If it's a concern of insulation, there, there will certainly still be insulation. I should be working down that street as far as where it all.
Isn't it must be so hard that it makes it obvious that it's a special.
Sure. Yeah, Chair, and we lose evidence because of the setbacks and do not place there's still sufficient of all.
And then, uh, other questions, though, are, is it just the pain? Well, well, it's time to update it.
Uh, Mr. Grundle, if you can hear. The question is regarding if this might be standing block with stucco and paints.
Uh, yeah, sorry, I can hear you. I'm, I'm actually in Texas. I'm sorry. I tried to find a quiet spot. It's hard to hear it. Um, the question is, uh, are we going to paint the wall white?
Will it be, will it be, uh, just, yes. Uh, concrete block wall. But will you start with? And painted or is there any other architectural features?
No, it'll, it'll be stuck owed and painted just like the existing wall. It'll look exactly like it does right now. We're not doing anything different. We're just moving it. As far as we can.
Any other questions? That, uh.
I'm like the morning, the blue hairs of the publisher.
Okay. Good question. Second, to be further discussion. All they were saying hi.
I love it.
Hi. And both. Thank you.
Mr. Grundle joins us. Feel free to hop up.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
When the remodel in garage, um. Special possible action to improve a remodel in garage, hopefully to tend that history for the whole discussion.
Maybe this item five E, uh, cases PC twenty-nine eighty-eight, that's my child, the underpitted red bliss block. That ten ninety-three oral competitive. This is the best to remodel existing home and to turn the garage as part of the remodel. The zone is part of one. This sends back to force. Just made a question. Now, this would expand the home in nearly all, uh. They, to all the building, quite frankly, so it's very large remodel in some sense. But, uh, the two things that came off of this would be one. It made me get a few questions again. It's not. The over maximum lock coverage sheet is very close and it's not exceeded thirty percent match. The other part that we did discuss. Is, uh, opening presentation is the object has refused. He under roof, he left and high house and to no longer necessitate fire. Some of those square footage. Uh, the juice were in the porch and patio spaces, so not the actual. All of its own. Well, again, here's a picture of the front of the house. The existing garage and see speaking behind here is, uh, a darkness just to have a best end for me, a good photo. Of where that house has been approximately, uh, these are the. Uh, side, 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 side. Here's a mixture of, uh, after, I guess you say, with simply some monetization stories developments go to be done. Essentially on all four sides, it's all. Uh, I shouldn't say that. A majority of the size are being. Expanded in the chain. What's more, here's the, uh, bulk of what is being done. This is the existing garage, the inverted portable space. The garage. And expanded portion of patio spaces for profit. See about this. Think that dash line as far as for that build. Is. Close to the run over. Now, as far as analysis goes, the improvements are always. Now, with existing architecture of states, as I was saying in the presentation, certainly this is. The monetization of that is what is existing otherwise. Basically, it's essentially thirty-nine of. Not have received any public comments since posted, so, uh. A preparation is to approve. Remodel the garage in PC twenty-five eighty, uh, and ninety-three for oral business of it, so to provide that without increased stipulations. While the ability permit issue by the city will be required for. Her two. Fire strength system, complex case, so if. If then, starting your roof being sprayed with five assets for a big proof, this is something. Uh, before the application of the plans. Uh, maybe moves, but certainly still like to have some of those just in case they've changed the building from this thing. Free provide on set intention to reduce our event and the pressure maximum flow, uh, lower. With that, it'll be lovely to make twenty-four.
Was it really? Station the, uh, materials. Then. Architecture, it's getting all through the materials. Colors in general, style of my suspicion.
Chair, I will. Do you want us to answer about also the, uh, heard? To the out of the road, uh, to maybe. Illustrate that with the light. Let me guess that. Chair, this makes, uh, psycho break. Lock. And it's supposed to, uh, it's supposed to roofing. There is a nice. A shegel. And so she. Uh, with the furniture, I would tell you about. Same kind of relax. There's a mix of, uh. I don't. And that's what she will then. Then, uh, that's a very, uh, it's just from, what are you?
Sorry, it's. Um.
All right, it's.
Sorry.
Stay again.
Very close, uh, overall, um, so yes, the, the, the roof will match what's already currently there. Um, so as the, uh, generals news, uh, the framing will be wood framing for. The garage, yeah. But it will, it will start with an action. Actually, I see.
So that all the roof material will be the same as that or what?
The, the flat roof is, is already there. I'm not changing either that, but, uh, yes.
Questions? Same question.
All of that. I know there's few. Usually twelve five that should be a day. Uh, we decided the regulation is there. There. Putting. All the requirements, it's, uh, of course, we do, uh, they are valid. Observe what's, what I think. You will be.
But I, what should I say? Any further discussion?
I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
Okay, all favor say hi. Hi, hi. All right, thank you. I agree. Uh, next step is the special multiple action to. Approve the carport conversion located at Port Venture, he's become all street.
All right. Are you going to see our? Both. Okay. Item five that reports a version that's the PC twenty-five and to do that, I think the step down. And set four hundred use of all street directly east. Uh, this for the legislature. And this is a question, you can currently just report it to a garage. So these are all eight and this would include a small addition consisting. From work may, uh, the mission started as, or she pulled over, did she three of you, this garage space? Now, this is actually time coach, you can go into those setbacks. It came up very early on review and modifications remain to ensure that's fit for fifty miles. And I'll get out of the conversation right now by saying the expansion is in work. So this, this is, you get that a little bit of that right now. So this is one of our, uh. And more you meet all, certainly this is supposed to see. You know, mission church, uh, directed across the street, which is for the elementary schools. Very hard to see visible, right? You know. So, like, again, this is. Taking it as much towards as you possibly can, you're pretty big garage space. In our store of cars. And here it is, that's affected. You know, certainly most, uh. Well, I think the best thing about this is because, you know, you did have a space under roof. Already, this is not a twenty-foot span. Front yard and looking as the dirt was packed on. They can see here the division. The breakout was ended, uh. The way to coursing some of the bricks themselves to match these. But again, here it is, um, you look at it as well. And of course, we'll be using, uh. Or a facade as well as, uh, additional elements that match these proportions of all. All right, so now this goes. Right, so, uh, I think that we're having this for probably. Expanded bottom matched behind the buildings is dead. These things have sent to thirty-nine, not received any comments of this proposal. So our request is to approve the carport conversions, PC twenty-five, uh, to. And for one, it's mall street, some states besides that, they got a population that follows. Building permission by the city will require currently construction. Her. And with that, I have any extra questions?
Any other questions? So.
I'll make a motion to approve this. Pro motion. So.
Question second and further discussion. All they were saying hi.
Hi.
And one. Thank you.
Wait. You want to?
Next step is, uh, something is he both. Question possible action to approve something is he both get one. Three sets of zero.
Chair, hello, this is our here as well. It's been done perfectly. This, uh, PC twenty-five and four at one degree, seven, seven, zero, seven street. I guess, you know, the new construction. Instruct, speaking of, uh, something is he both in. For your. So these are all six P. This is with any such a terrace issue where we. Don't usually have additions with, uh, possible five numbers, uh, is within such a terrace surprise. Uh, the request will complete design, have them counted, uh, back there around both. Uh, the request will complete design, have them candid, uh, back there around both pool. And decide we see a, uh, great opportunity for policy of to have a few, both new, present good C roads. The overall height remains over the wall. This is an existence where even with the something nature of it, with the pitch roof, it'll be right at a ten foot mark. For finished rate, it'll surround sun function. Here's the division of the whole, uh, it's a community, so I don't have any facade here for you, but. And we, we should show you the, or at least problems. Same hospital, right, that, that, I mean, something you see was here at the bar and. See stairs. So. And the addition of the structure itself. You'll know it is, uh, cereals, start with columns are painted the same colors in the house. And we do have a face of dark brown, that is the same as the face of a, of the house, so. These two. Are holding super important, yes, we say. Again, as mentioned. Uh, here we are at Sierra Floyd, that's the top of it, it should be, it's a plank of part. Our analysis is that this is, uh, for my is, and everything we intend to be as far as, you know. Same polish materials. Deal look of the main instruction. These concession of section thirty nine, but we're not receiving comments on this proposal. Our request is to approve this, that we see both, PC twenty five ninety four at one three seven seven, several was blue industry. So it's by the, and that can just stipulations, one, the building permit issued by us, these required, the whole eight construction to be approved. Two, provide outside attention to the hundred years tower, that it was posed, good construction, maximum twelve step. And to run the drain from the local consumer function, we don't intend to make a second. With some busy women, the chair, it's not still water. With that, it'd be happy to answer your question.
I said, I actually wasn't lot, others, she says, is that the house, others, do you know she wants to find?
Yeah, in, uh, chair, it's, uh, I don't have a good answer for why the decision was made for Sunset Terrace, because the terrace is very high. Lot coverage, I'll double check for you, just to be sure, we'll give a feeling for it. But it is, is. Uncharacteristic of the rest of our base, you say, of, uh. Is allowed in that neighborhood.
And so, um, that H R will, I should then.
You do.
Um, so we're not. So our group was not in the same situation, so.
Chair, that's right.
Um, I think that you.
Question. I have number one. Building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction occurs. Construction has a.
Well, my dear, that is correct, so did you have a existing current pool?
Well, criticize that pool. That, that retention or the detention or whatever, you know, you want to call it. Is physically underground. There's footings all set to go. Will there be growth time, as far as coverage and a lot. With what they're proposing there, I would say that we could be maxing out, I don't know what restrictions are, may have H O A. But, you know, the pools there, that this whole parquet is still go. And then what's that number two?
Is regarding the protection.
Yes. How? I can't see how you can get a hundred year, six hour event in there. And not flood. Because they don't have a big enough drain dug in to the bottom, and if they do, then it's not kind of, we've been tied into the city super. And the city, what are they going to say about that? Because there's nowhere else to go. The ground around there, adversity pitch away, and it's, you know. Questions, questions.
And what I remember, Jerry, these are all, uh, perfectly fair questions to ask, I'm not an engineer. Right, all the difference, I, I'd say does not provide engineering services for yourself, is to confirm your suspicion. Should seem to be true, that is on the O's, the I's. That.
But, I mean, you know. The, the biggest one is, it has been. Engineered and started way before any permits had been drawn up. I had a number one, then, you know, it's. Either we require that or we don't. And I've been involved in several issues in other, uh, cities around here, uh, with projects I've done, where we. Said, hey, you listen, you and that. Then the neighbor, oh, yeah, we can't do this, we can't, but I mean, it's just one of those things, it's just what I'm trying to be.
I think, and in approving, we approve. The, the sign of it, it is still stipulated on, um. Getting a building permit and. And/or to get a building, I can't prove. In fact, on site retention, but then also that, that law coverage is not seen on. So, uh, they did. At least to have that. Those people. Providing proof that before, that people build it's a good issue.
Chair, I know it. I'm going to speak for you, especially if they try to say most state, uh, clarify. Is your, uh. Discussion regarding having of those three stipulation regarding the law coverage, so the room?
I wouldn't that, yes.
Correct.
Yeah. That, that's pretty, I just. Easily be confident, you know, have to do it each year.
Right. So, I. I will let, I'll answer the board, like, make that motion, and remember the board wishes to.
Yeah, for our third question. You don't mind, yeah, I think, because that is my presentation, huh? And, um, great question, however, that was part of the pool, right? So some give you that full session back there, that's what we gotta do, the first pictures, Randy, you want to go back, see if you guys divided. All that's part of the pool, my spoke is the gazebo. So from the ground up, it's the gazebo, so that whole, uh, did I, I should be very first, so I have like.
So, but I do have photos from the presentation I have.
Okay, um, but that was part of, so that's some keep, the some given in the art was part of the pool. And that's provided, what my spoke is, is the gazebo, so moving around that, including founded, including foundation. But you're right, that's something that you were also seeing as we move our student patient.
He has.
Well, yeah, if, if they approved it under the pool. Good luck.
That, that, that. That one. Well, this is about to begin, that's the. That motion. Motion, I'm going to do for, for those, is he both. Uh, third to the, that is my, okay, options, one and two, and as division that a lot of bridge is burnt. That was mass from law, uh, national. That's the honesty that. Or so, but, if you're ready with the gun, pick her. Wow.
You may look.
That motion?
Oh, awesome, I love it.
Okay, thank you. And so, any further discussion? Uh, there was a sleep. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you for. Your name.
I mean.
Uh, public works, uh, facility. Uh, go to. Eliminate this item, with works, so located on the five south desert now.
Chair, I did not take, see.
Yeah.
Uh, I apologize, with our new fangled technology, we just wanted to pull the love of your technology. The staff report was not in your package, revise the package, that is the printed paper before you, a mixture of us. Is the exact what goes out of it. After discussing with you, and I appreciate the consideration of the revised. Agenda, so we have a discussion.
What would you say, Eric? So, so the drawings that, I see this, the drawings that I saw are not accurate, the drawings are accurate.
Yeah, they're, this is not.
Words without a clue.
This isn't.
So, Chair, this is five inch, usually point five, that is, so of course, facility, that on five, plus the, at night. Sorry, it's all facility, that on the nose, that's, uh, how we classify this specific use and stuff. This request before you is to monitor us, uh, of course, you are. Believe me. Uh, there is no allergy, the overall metro fire station, that all the lawn moved much. The, uh, quad. Quadrular structure gone removed. The yards would be all cleaned up, uh, it's your new storage options. New build, new raw, should be part of a nice day, they, they, there's like a conversation. Just to. Talk about us, all come about now. This isn't how the loop went against, this has been, that came from almost all the works for at least ten years, uh, and it's finally happened. This finally into the capital program, question for this concurrent fiscal year. So, uh, we'll show it to you today, we'll show it to, uh. Council in two weeks, and then we hope to go towards construction. With your support, council support that's just possible, by fact, that they will pass a place of point twenty five employees. Please let me know, as they will be displaced while this construction is occurring. So this is, could a big send up? Sure, right, I don't want to surround this, I probably think, yeah, yeah, like living. We're gonna figure out something, so here's a division of what is confirmed, you can propose, I will. Show you what came from this park is actually four now. But it's much better than it was. Uh, with this particular apartment, uh, called lot, that is a lot of good construction. So, what we, uh, told, uh, several times. One of those, uh, our local, our field. And I know this is a bit ironic, our stations, the ring was knocking up, but I can say, so. But this is a park is, then, that will accept and will not. So. We think we have, like, there's always, you can see the sandal tree, park. We have changed for most apparent roof. In the office portion, garage, our sheet, as we needed to, uh, make space for storage within ten spaces, but that's, there's messy. And that garage area is all traditional storage and, uh, cruise work. The main, uh. On elevation here, along with the path is on the basement, it's possible, so you do have. Your windows, yes, file roof that does intermix with elements of parrot proof. And certainly we want to encourage and acknowledge the main entry point as well. So as I know, we have, we have maximized every inch of this site until we set the capacity can. There is an existing very tall one, separate, sorry, they are, believe this. Exposed dimensions, last, that's the word. But if they park on basis, possibly can, we can tell, uh, we might. Personal digital support, uh, maybe the theme of Trump's, also. There are areas of whole good storage, well, there's areas for public storage, and these are two, full garage doors. That have entrances and exits for, uh, those who use to work, you know. As well as a portion for the streets. Another thing that's a radical change by, frankly, is fuel. Not only is the fueling internal to the site, but as needed, there would be a bit of a plus, say, you say. Along home show road, those few places we pull off, side and refuel. The logistics of trying to get fuel underneath the sidewalk, underneath the grass, underneath the fall is. Hard. But that's why we have the experts doing the work that they do, or something that happen. We, uh, uh. We're pretty far on utility prices, just make sure that what we're showing you is certainly feasible and have done. And I'll move forward. Here's a mention of the interior of the building. The offices, uh, for all works, and to be developed, would be development, is mentioning everyone. Uh, building. The code of first things are located around here. Planning, they may not go here, depending, uh, needs and space availability. There's a major section area that would be, uh, for anyone who went in, decided to multiple bathroom. And then directly behind this area, this education area, as well as space only for breaks and training. Uh, trying to get twenty five employees all trained at the same time as their car, when you don't have space for it to do so. We finally have submission of space to do so, as well as all other city functions. If you see this as the immediate need resolution, as well as future crew fare to be sent, that we possibly can. The size of the site that we have available, so. It's been the United States closet, it's all storage here available to the site. It'll, well, I'm choosing as well as, uh, blockers, cameras, bathrooms. And then we garage space, that again, has messy, uh, not covered in. They're all up, they don't look. And these are tall ceilings, we'll be made it as short as we possibly could, you know, parrot and. So the picture, it would have been. Not necessarily out of place, considering the task and, uh, the, uh, city leaders, uh, to the north. Certainly, we don't want to be tossed, running. There are additional workstations or irrigation repair, the bench testing, what have you. Here on the south side as well. And access doors on all, uh, front, west and rear. Now, again, our story through this, but. We did as much as we possibly could, and we are two hundred thousand dollars, hundred thousand, as right on. And we did everything we see, we want to make sure that we show them something that's peaceful, something that's real, and something that's a bit pleasant. So we think we've accomplished that, so we sent possible, and certainly. Uh, this, I don't know, recommended by the city council, see this, so that there are, is feedback, changes, alterations, not, if you'd like to see, certainly. Pass those along, and we'll take those, uh, and advise the council of your feedback. So our recommendation is to recommend approval to the city council, some PC twenty five ninety eight that would apply, a session, I have. Other students provided, and I will. Get ahead of the conversation, start right here, were any questions?
Why don't that ask questions?
I did check with Joe on that before, and because this is not, and I'm clear this is a record as well, because this. Parcel is not so impacted for some, nor is it centered, that restriction is not in place, it's a feel free.
Question.
Yes.
Um, and I'm glad to see the, the public, um. Handicap bathroom looks nice, looks like it's good, big space.
Yes.
But I'm also seeing the handicap to inviting women's stuff, and a handicap. Or am I, or am I not?
So, yes.
I guess I'm asking, the question is. Are we going up?
So, council, very, very nice, and we do have a public restroom available for guests, and those combined with all state regulations regarding ADA and health change stations here. And yes, for staff, which is, we do have, not only the, the. Standard stalls, the ones that began as typical with all bathrooms, those ADA stalls, you see that ADA turn around a little. Dash circle around there, as well for any, uh. Needs that we don't have today, just so we could have the future.
Could that be, I guess what I'm asking is, could? Their bathrooms are expensive, obviously, um, but could that be a handicap, won't I? Uh, that, either be on me or be me on that, in statement.
Uh, I'll restate your question, just to make sure I'm stating, uh, answering correctly. Is your.
Employee. Happens.
Well, it could be a, a, you know, such a.
Right, yes.
Uh. I don't have, it came as a matter, I am not a building official, I'll go look for it, so let's see if you know more about day loss happens.
Okay, and you're, uh, adopting, love, you're required, yeah, and I feel.
Yes, Chair, trying to ask you, remind the employee, if I'm a building official, that is, right, you have to be, thank you.
That was just a question.
Uh, wait, yeah, um, so, I'm on behalf of the, of the, it's just rounding this out of the months, I am just a lot to ask about the height of the building, and I'm sure you know this, but. It seems like it's probably getting taller. Alright, then that. And that's my one cap.
Oh, yes, well, remember, certainly the old fire cross is muted in all sets of mass, Eric, so what is it?
Yeah, okay, so what is the, what else, the height restriction? For public.
So, yes, uh, well, members of, in all facilities, three, five feet, this is less than, I think, or five to the maximum, I don't, I don't even think we're above them.
Twenty five six.
Yeah, I didn't think really close, so, uh, generally, two story, picture of houses somewhere around thirty. Or two, something like that, so this is beef. Shorter than the two story.
Um, and then it looks like there's a ten foot landscape setback, but it's something partly, are there any, I don't believe, uh, you know, like head between the housing there, or?
The, or remember, I don't have a. I should have provided you, excuse you, apologize for not doing so, that balls, uh. Insisted with our. I should have provided you a street view of Rogers, but I'm doing so that balls uh consistent with our sound walls, I say, of course, height itself. This is a situation where every available inch is needed in the site. This is uh this is not. Going further than what exists today. To your point, a another applicant or private company proposing something similar would be that. I hope that's big enough for you to understand how I think of persons.
But this is, this is not appearance, what you're saying, but if if we're own fighting, but else it would be that.
If there was anyone else, this would not be supporting. So this is an existing condition that we are built, which you made to aim. Um, I'm gonna say that, but again, my choice is in case I'm safe.
Are there, you know, I don't know, who can, the friend, or the the. Parking. Is there any opportunity with some that's again that I don't see, but is there? Opportunity to add some lights, at least to try.
So yes, chair, this is not a uh, and certainly that's not the parking lot. Paying is going to be easier, so this is a nice protection of the elevations of the building, but it's not protect. The built condition by, yes, to the extent that we can, landscape we have, there is an amazing amount of utilities. Underneath this building and these roads uh to then, it will say it's been a month long process by trying to do females almost daily. Uh, should try to avoid everything that is around this area, we don't regret it, it's six hundred. Oh, mine's like we didn't swear at this time. Plus, uh, to the extent that we can, when trees, shrubs, and new vine, how long that punch we serve.
Nice being given, like, giving some. Badness, basically, badness, you know, pot, should be that's and softer.
Yes, and the good news with uh all these projects, as we play lessons, the virtual square, uh all of our plastic. Uh, I started sweating, essentially, you know, with all ancient forest, so we've learned how it is.
And fluorescents, that's the name of it.
So I guess another question, I mean, then I still consider that there's been some despite. I I was doing the best, is it the city, does it all the fence on the back, or is it just like east field school, okay? Uh, the president, the residential. Again, you.
So we remember that the the. It's always a tricky thing, we're dealing with this a lot of places, I have capital. The residents have. Unless we both rather have a surveyor and make sure that mine all is completely off their property, their walls completely off my property is tricky, especially actually. First, we need, then it means for light and fast bounce, you have uh parcels along this uh stretch as well. Going into this canyon.
Okay, so the, is the fence there, is it totally continuous right now, or is it like where?
My whole uh on the west side, yes, it is.
Right, that's it's a lot, yeah, yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, is there possibly definitely this, and you might be willing to raise the height of that fence, if that might help those. We're a little bit.
We remember that, I certainly looking into it, I know what we've just paid to one uh north of quick canal, along your draft for that horse. I have actually more than that's left. There's some.
It's in there, but you.
I mean, yeah, the budget's to your million, they're underneath the budget, so, yes, I can certainly pass up the event along, see what is possible, is there a height you have in mind?
I don't, I just, you know, thinking of that, that this is kind of, it's obviously already a pretty, you know, that's real use, and that doesn't have a right word, but you guys said. It it doesn't make sense or eventual, so I just think it might be a good neighbor link to for the side.
Well, the west fence. The block goes up like six feet, and the bush goes up and down about four.
Very good.
And this time in West side.
But not this city, not this fence.
Yeah, no, they're talking about that fence, that's not really.
Well, there's not, um, there is no more bush on the city side.
It's on the, it's on the.
No, it's on the side, it's on the.
It's called the sprinter side.
You know, it's it's on the other side of the other fence, I don't know who put it up when.
Also, yeah, so.
The stairs at the bottom. They've prepared that miniature machine, but it's like this layer of stair lets.
Yes.
Right. Right. Right.
All twenty five of those problems, that's you. You touch the touch the block along.
Sure, yes.
Uh, yes, I'm. And in our picture, in fact, that's.
Those, what's your role?
On the ends of the tile. Where one end is tucked into the entry. Tower, and the others just hanging on finish, so it just maybe cares what that will be if it's. Yeah, all the structure, but it's just. Like the, yeah, that that official with the sound effect again.
Sure. With the architect, the city ended up using. This group called my own uh, we're moving different for them. This is the time, this is the form to provide that sort of detail, if that's not available, so do that. You drive by, this is not capable.
That's just kind of thanks to that little. I would do it's not finished or. The entry tower itself to me is. I think they're, that it seems a little upscale. Uh, I really think they're both there, right, and I literally try to hang it up, air pushing in, well, it's not, it's not, I mean, that's.
It was recession Steve Street, but the square house area or the whatever, I think it's not so tall, I wonder if they're. I don't know, but I have. You're right, it's brand. It's just that. The dog, there's going to be some dog years thing is happening, and I wonder if that still, actually, I don't know if it's necessary. I don't, I mean, I don't, if we're naked, and I don't, nobody's gonna. So, okay, I had that. Eventually, no, we, if we have myself, I I wouldn't stop this from moving forward, I would say it was not recommended, but you leave it, dog, you're, it was.
Or when it's on the.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it should.
Yes, yeah, like way that it can, or it's like this. It does, it it's a pretty simple building, which I think is fine, and that 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 aspect of it is.
Yeah, somebody simple is fine, there's some good versions, right?
I know, I said. Uh, trying. And it's hard to think of that, just right. So, I mean, it sounds like they're suggesting perhaps maybe that entry could just go down a little bit.
Yeah, a little bit, maybe some, it's still, yeah. Little bit, a little more finesse, I guess, on the top here, but uh. Is it, does it look like what they're trying to accomplish is matching an entry height? With the storage and basket you don't have.
Well, uh, council, I very well, I mean. Black in our, that maybe it is, because you are at tree, and as you look out, it's it's not.
You guys are great, yeah, you guys are.
Right, because.
That will affect it, right?
You want to do that, yes, for a basic.
So they might be trying to do that, and actually, but I think like what we're all saying is that it's maybe not still too original.
None of those are fifty feet tall, as it is.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And also the building, and and if you want to keep it not well identified. But I think, I think this, I'm sure this is my issue, but. It was. Kind of, I'm fairly committed, that could sound suitable there, since very.
And chair, this is so good. In my past lives, people always forget about sign, and it's something that exposed equipments have tacked on after the fact, so yes. That is so they actually certainly pass it, well. Uh, generally speaking, this is goes back to last year's yard, which is X number on site. This sort of all facilities site would be building mountain old generally and not down.
Yeah.
General, so. There are the black old ones across the top.
But this something as you verified, so you know what it is, where it's supposed to go, when you're checking.
Yes.
Well, yes, um, what'll um, the equipment, like the uh gators, you said, they're outside or inside?
So uh council, everything that we can store inside, we do. I know by the ring has been a a whole with a lot of the stuff, so yes, there are aspects of. Change covering, or see there's a little dash line, or is it a little? Uh, parking can key area, actually saying smaller question. Uh, they've always come to the streets, streets, sneakers are in the paddles, or they're just kind of like, they're so hey. And then there's something in her, the materials storage, those people store out, so yes, that's sort of good, hopefully here. Uh, the other side news is certainly the hilltop will have a similar yard, but. As well as the shield square and line off, a lot of two will have actually the yard as well, so certainly. What do you want to get closer to wherever you should be, you should put it.
Just, I think we'll just put it this thought out there, so. Just wondering, does it make any sense at all to be adding any kind of like grind security?
Oh, why would you say? Uh, yes, there it is, and that's my fault for not following up, I obviously stuck on other items. So there are badge entry gates here, this is an egress only. And then with the egress only queue, this is a wall gate, and then item. Cars come in, they make a future, and they'll run back out. And this one currently showing this, putting gates up, because this is only you guys who should bring out, everyone here. And extensive of going in, round back out, yes, all this to be secure, using the walls, using the building itself to make all that security.
I also just, I'm sorry, I go over on the, I guess, the rear, I don't think that's sound of, yeah, so uh, sound elevation. Yeah, rear, right, um, I just, we care about the scale, maybe you can tell as well, because that seems kind of. But it's like, that's, it's not right word, but borrowed it, and it's uh, you know, it's kind of overkill, or what? Or uh, when you're trying to stay a little deep, this life thing, is that sort of stuff that we have from N B A school, you can see that, yeah. I mean, this is nice, because once it's got. A lot of dramatic, it just rest shadow, I guess.
And.
But it's a lot of extra stuff there for for maintenance.
I hope the uh, I have a nation of states. These apartment sites do differ to us, and uh. Through a lot of things, it's the wall, and this is regular, I guess, like you said, so as this conversation evolves. All this can be incorporated, will be incorporated, it's the next. Person.
I guess, I think that does it, when you said that, that that was kind of popular, I get from this, the. Saw, it's that it looks like there was a lot of stuff.
A lot of, it's it's it's.
Well.
It's easily designed. It looks like three different things to. And.
Yeah, I answered any questions.
Do we have to make a motion? I love them. I'm making a motion. As presented tonight, uh, to move that.
They recommended the council, right, that approval?
Right.
Yeah, I'll back. Here's a motion, and I said, yeah, are there just?
Yes, you know, that I'm there, it is not quite sure, it's not ready for approval yet, but um. It's like, you can sell with a vote, um, I I voted, I wish that's second. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, they've told me, I.
Uh.
They're saying though. Right. Uh, uh, you want to do the executive session, as I think both of them, for two hours, so.
Chair, if you're interested in two things, I would worry, we certainly do so in my staff, or could just be I have a staff.
Okay, okay, that's that, while we're done about that, if there are any board members that need. Okay, so I need a motion for us. Uh, to move to the executive session, um. So can, your motion was sent, I'll take it, stand up, like that, okay. And. Is that the uh exit, we say this decision. Have a motion to this, we're gonna send in, we'll never say that, I.
Chair, we're more high on tonight, it's time to know if there's a motion to say.
Oh, well, that part of the meeting would be, that's right, okay.
Yes, sir.
We're going to be a motion to be sure.
Seven.
Got a motion, I say, sure, interesting. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.